...in the budget. And then comparing current year to prior year, if you're looking at that bottom graph, the largest decrease was once again in that park and recreation function, mainly in the recreation department due to decreased personnel service costs.
Is that park and rec, is that due to lawn mowing service that we were thinking about doing?
The maintenance portion, yes, is due to that Public Works is actually doing the lawn mowing services versus contracting, which in this current year budget, we've taken out. And for the recreation component, it was basically the reduction of a position that makes up that difference.
That was going to be my question. I call it was a budgeted $100,000 for contracted mowing services that we never did.
See now that has me scared going into this next budget process because that's exactly the dollar amount. That's a comp, that was a compliment because you're very well versed and you paying attention that has me worried.
Moving on to page 13 then, here we start the discussion of those enterprise funds of the city. So the electric fund, the water fund, surface water, wastewater, the fiber optic fund, and the solid waste fund. Also, that table on page 13 is a quick snapshot of those enterprise funds and that change in that financial position. The top part of that table shows it by classification and then the bottom part of that table shows it by each of the individual funds, which you can see all of those funds had a positive improved financial position in 2021. So overall, the enterprise funds were up about 2.7 million. And as you flip over to page 14, we'll walk through a brief summary of each fund. On page 14 shows a couple, a graph and a table of the electric fund operations, just to show you some trend analysis there. Overall, the change in the net position increased about 950,000. The city saw positive operations. The gross profit results in this fund increased by about 190,000 compared to the prior year. This funded have increased rates, which had an impact on the fund. Then flipping over to page 16, shows a table of the water fund for the past five years. It summarizes, you know, the operating revenues, operating expenses. We detail out that depreciation expense on a separate line there. But overall, the water fund had an increase in net position of about 880,000. The operating revenues were up about 120,000 due to increased consumption in 2021. The operating expenses were slightly down about 50,000, primarily in the professional services and materials and supplies areas. Surface water fund on the next page, once again, positive operating results. Overall, the change in net position after any transfers was up about 280,000. Overall, the revenues increased mainly due to any increase in the customers. The one big item there that I'll just point out is if you're looking at that capital contribution line, you're seeing there was 930,000 in 2020, nothing in 2021. Just a reminder that last year, there was that capital contribution for the MSA funds, as I was saying, you advanced funds for a street project. So when those MSA funds were put in to the surface water fund for the capital project, it's shown as a capital contribution. It gets split out on a separate line. So I just wanted to point that out, just as a reminder of what happened last year for Moving on to the next page, the wastewater fund. Overall, had positive operating income and after transfers out ended the year with a change in net position of about 545,000. You know, the operating revenues were pretty flat, up about $5,000. Overall, the expenses were down about 140,000 and that was mainly in purchase utilities and professional services saw an increase last year. Then page 19, the fiber optic fund. As we already briefly talked about, the end of the year with a deficit net position of about 666,000, but did see a slight improvement, about 68,000 in the current year.
You still haven't fixed it.
And then the last enterprise fund is that solid waste fund. Once again, had positive operating income in the current year and after any transfers out ended the year about 34,000 increase in the net position. Overall, the operating revenues increased about 10,000 due to an increase in customers. The expenses were up a little bit, about 33,000 mainly in the professional service area. And then I'll, that non-operating revenue area, the city has received a grant every year that is credited into this fund. So that's at 33,000 you're seeing there, but overall, a slight increase, about 34,000 in the net position. And then the last couple of pages I'll touch on is the government-wide financial statements. So on page 21, the table there, the government-wide financial statements is when you, as a city, you take all your governmental funds, which are on a modified accrual basis of accounting, and then you add in any capital asset activity of the city, any long-term liabilities such as any pensions you have with the PERA, any OPEB liabilities you have, and they get all rolled up into what's called the government-wide financial statements. One big snapshot of the city with all the governmental activities and the business-type activities. So that's what this table is showing. So overall, the net position when you roll up all those governmental business type include all capital asset activity, all long-term liabilities of the city. You're seeing an increase of about 6.6 million in the net position of the city for 2021. The business-type activities, which is in the middle there, is talks, exactly aligns with just what we walked through, each of the individual funds. When you're looking at the governmental activities, up about 3.5 million, a lot of that is in that net investment in capital assets. And that's just due to the continued investment in the infrastructure and the capital assets, you know, the street projects and the road projects throughout the years. So with that, that was all I intended to go through on the financial results. Overall, a good financial year, like I said, the general fund ended about 845,000, improved financial position compared to a balanced budget for the 2021 year. But I can open it up again if there's any other questions on the financial results or if anyone wants to go back to anything else in the report.
Any questions for Jackie?
So, you know, we're really, we're really in the black. That means are we charging our residents too much on these different, I suppose that's not an answer. I could answer that.
Yeah, so I mean, for the enterprise funds, you had positive operations as far as what you charge your residents. That's a city, you know, discussion to have, you know, as part of the audit, you know, we show the results of the audit, you know, based on what you charged and the expenses.
Funds all the time and I don't know what the answer is on that. Dan, do you know?
Well, yes, I mean, this, you have to realize that a financial statement is a snapshot in time. It's December 31st. It is not including whatever your future plans are. Again, we've had a number of discussions in which we will have a fund balance discussion. The one tonight is that we're, that I've got on the policy part is just about the general fund. And as Jackie had referenced, we have a 35% pro, 35% policy right now to maintain that. I'm looking at increasing that, but that'll be later on. We will have a fund balance discussion on our enterprise funds. A part that we need to realize is that the infrastructure of the city has a lot of needs. Later tonight at City Council, we'll be issuing our, well, hopefully we'll approve the sale of a bond. Part of that, that bond sale is backed up by revenues in three of our enterprise funds. That's not being reflected here, but we're going to be increasing our debt payments in three of those funds. Right now, we're on a, we're on a trajectory of every two years that we're, two to three years, we're going to be going off for additional bond issuances. And again, based upon past history, anything that's related to water and sewer, they're going to pay their own way. So that's part of that rate that we're charging our customers. So as we've seen our fund balance increase in the year, in the next 10-year outlook, it is going to decrease. And so that's without making any changes in our rate. But we will be having a separate workshop just on fund balance and on the rates coming up this year and coming up probably within about a month, month and a half, and we'll have that discussion. So to answer your question, at a year-end of 2021, we've increased all the way across the board. We're looking good. Is it time where we say, hey, we need to potentially reduce our rates? Let's not get ahead of ourselves at that point in time because we do have some other needs within the city. And it does open up some nice options for us. Again, we're going to see that interest rates are going up. They're going up fast. I wish we would have had our bond issuance two months ago. We would save the city some money. That was our original intention, if you remember from last year. But if we look back this time next year, we're probably going to see the interest rates going to be up probably 2% more at least. That may be a time that maybe we want to use some of that fund balance instead of the next time we go for a bond issuance, that we do an internal loan. And, you know, for the street portion of our, of our, instead of bonding, the street portion that we use an internal loan, the fund balance would help us do that. We can also make some interest for our internal service fund, our enterprise funds. So let's wait to have that overall discussion on the fund balance to be, to make sure we're comfortable where we're at, at least for a 10-year look, before we start to jump to the conclusion that we're overcharging our customers or that our fund balances are too high.
Councilmember Thorson.
Just to, I mean, I understand Councilmember Peterson's question and appreciate Finance Director's response. But, you know, naturally, you know, we open these books and we look at it during this workshop and then the rest of the year, we have other topics, so it doesn't really get discussed. So it's a legitimate question, but yeah, like he points out, if you'll notice on the bottom of all these funds, it says income before transfers as a percentage of operating revenue. A lot of our enterprise funds have a dedicated amount that they transfer back into the general fund to finance day-to-day operations. That number has fluctuated over time. I think our goal, or the goal has been to transition away from such a large transfer and reliance on enterprise funds because of the things he points out. But, you know, you look at that and it's essentially, you know, this number here is in, in day-to-day or regular terms, it's your margin. It's, it's what you're making after your expenses, what you're charging. And some of these look like they're pretty high, so naturally someone may say, well, you're charging too much for the water fund. Well, as Finance Director pointed out, we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And so that traditionally has been the, you know, explanation as to why we're raising rates. But the absence of a fund balance policy, I think, kind of muddies that water. I mean, we know these things are going to cost money and we're either going to get it through taxes or fees. But the question is, what do we charge, you know? And so that's going to be an ongoing thing that we need to look at. But I think, you know, in certain funds such as, let's take the solid waste fund for example, you know, that is something, you know, that my personal opinion is like it's a pass-through. We don't have city trucks collecting trash. We do do the billing, but we do that by our own choice. I mean, we've chosen to inj, interject and be the middle man out of convenience, I suppose is one of the reasonings for it. But in a sense, you know, it's a pass-through and we're marking it up still and we're making money and that fund is continuing to grow. What's the plan for that solid waste fund? I mean, are we saving up to buy new trash bins in 10 years? I, I hope not, but that's certainly something that we should be able to look at and say, you know, the current trash contract is set to expire. We're going to have to look at that soon. We have not raised rates since we established that, that new hauler. And, you know, we'd have a substantial fund balance in that fund. So that might be one that, you know, the argument of needing to continue to build up a fund for future capital, this is not one of them. And so maybe it might make sense to not raise rates or potentially operate at a deficit for a few years as like a discount for the years we've overcharged. I mean, these are things that we can look at. And when we have those discussions, hopefully we remember to pull these out and look at this stuff. So it's a good question, but as Finance Director pointed out, there's a lot more context behind it. But yes, we're in the black and it's a good position to be in, but there's all sorts of uncertainties, inflation, interest rates, the economy, you know, so thank you.
No, Councilmember Thorson, you make a very good point in bringing up the solid fund because it does not have, you know, a capital need per se versus the other enterprise funds. That is truly the intention of what we're trying to do and that's where you'll see that, I think we're, we're just entering year three of the contract. They have a 3% annual increase now that goes in for the remainder of the contract. I think the contract's five years. In addition, we're, we've been experiencing somewhere between 4% to 5% increases in tip charges. It was not the intention to, to raise that rate at all during the timeframe of that contract because of the fund balance that's in there. And then, you know, we can take a look at where that fund balance is after, after that point in time. But absolutely, that the intention of this fund was not to, to look at at least for the five years of that contract to raise the rates on that. And then to run negative losses is, was a thought.
Anything else for Jackie? Jackie did a great job. Appreciate it. Great analysis and with the Finance Director. I think at the start of it, when we met, I knew that things were going to go good this year. So I think you had a good team to work with. So thank you, Dan, and your group and your groups. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do it again next year. Right, exactly.
Item number two, giving a quarterly update on the general fund and the enterprise funds for 2022. Again, there's not a lot of data. We haven't received property tax and so forth on the revenue side for the general fund. So you're, you're going to see that the general fund, so first of all, we had a balanced budget is what we adopted for the 2022 of $7.9 million. Revenue to date is really only $600,000 as of March 31st. The bulk of that's in permitting and again, just because we haven't gotten, you know, our, the property tax collection yet at this point in time. The city has very reliable numbers as far as percentage of collection of property taxes. We're consistently year after year, right around that 99% collection rate in the first year, which is fantastic. So I've taken that information and, and kind of done a projection outwards for the revenue for the year. And I, I think we'll end up being positive over all of revenue for, at this point in time, looking at it for 2022 compared to what we budgeted about $255,000. Our expenditures for the year, I think we're going to be pretty closer on track to where we're at. We'll have a little bit of a positive. Again, I think we're keeping that trend moving forward where we end up having a surplus in our general fund. I'm estimating it somewhere around that $300,000 at this, at this point in time. Again, a lot of things can change as the years, as the year moves on. Again, I'm seeing the exact same thing in our, in our enterprise funds. All of them are, I'm projecting for this year at this point in time to be positive, again, adding to the, the fund balance that's in there. Again, the, the debt that we're going to be talking about tonight, the new bond, is not included in here at this point in time. But again, we're, I think we're sitting very, very well. The wastewater isn't performing as well at this point in time from a budgetary standpoint. But again, for year-end, we're still looking at a positive fund balance of $175,000 by year-end. Surface water positive approximately $360,000. Solid waste, I'm looking at 50,000 at this point in time, projecting it for the year, still positive. And then fiber optics, we're looking at that we'll end up with about $112,000. Again, trying to turn that negative fund balance into a positive. I think it's got about a 30-year plan before it actually turns, no, it won't be that long, but it's, it's, it's out there a way unless Jackie really did want to help us out trying to get that fund balance.
Older, she should fix it.
So I'm going to try to go a little quick. I know we have another item and I'd like to talk about the fund balance, a little bit of the general fund. So to sum up kind of where we're at for the first quarter is I think we're looking very good in our general fund, in our enterprise funds. And really, it's no surprise, we've been kind of looking that way for a number of years and we just got done seeing how we ended up in, at the end of 2021, where we're positive across the board. So again, I do want to, I do want to say that a lot of the credit, and it actually goes a long way when we go into a bond rating call, a lot of the credit has to go to the management of the city, our department heads. We have a very frugal group for the most part. They're very conscientious and they really do monitor their budgets on a regular basis. And that really is what, you know, ends up having positive results for the city, especially we see time and time again, we're under expenditures. Now, this year could play out a little bit different, different as inflation continues to rise. You know, we see a lot of it, especially in our energy costs, especially when we're talking about fuel costs. So we'll, we'll keep that under our, a close eye on that as the year progresses. So if there's any questions on the first quarter of 2022, I'll take those now.
Any questions on the first quarter? Not? Move ahead.
Move ahead. I'm going to spend some time and talk about a change, and I'm not looking for a total re-haul of our fund balance policy. I think we have a very good fund balance policy. I just kind of want to look at the changing of that 35% for the general fund of our fund balance. The state auditor recommends 35 to 50%. The city of Oakdale policy thrives, or strives to get 50%. Maplewood has a minimum of 40% and strives for 50%. I'm proposing, especially with how we ended 2021, where we have 44% of our undesignated fund balance in the general fund, that we change our policy, that we do maintain it at a 40% and that we do strive for that 50%. Part of, part of, and we'll hear a little bit more today when Baker Tilly is here, when we talk about the bonds and the bond call, a very important component that they look at when they give us our bond rating is our fund balances. And are we adequately holding enough of our fund balance there? And one of the questions that they specifically had asked was our general fund. And again, number one, do you have a policy? Yes. What is it? It's 35. Oh, you're kind of on the lower end and that, you know, but, but you've got 44% at the end of this year, but your policy isn't supporting that component to it. This is an item, again, you know, I kind of hit the, hit the, I didn't give John, our city manager, John, too much time when he first walked in the door. Kind of wanted to have a number of items that we kind of discussed. I gave him a little bit of time to kind of digest them and then I come back at them again. But this was one of them that we had talked about and I, and I believe right away, he was very supportive of looking into that. And I actually think that he had said, from where he had come from, and we don't mention that, that name anymore, that they, they had a fund balance policy of minimum of 40%. And so that really is what is in line with a lot of the, of the cities. And part of me as a Finance Director, one of the concerns that I always have is that as Councilmember Thorson had talked about, we do, we transfer $820,000 and the majority of that $820,000 does come from our enterprise funds. That is subsidizing our general fund to help reduce taxes for our residents is the bottom line to it. But we also have heavy reliance on intergovernmental funds to the tune of about $1.3 million in local government aid. There has been for a number of years and someday, it's not just going to be talk, it's actually going to happen. They keep talking about reducing that local government aid. Well, that 1.3% or that $1.3 million for us on a $7.9 million general fund, which we need, is going to be a huge impact onto us. That right there is one-third of our, you know, fund balance. And so I think we, we do need to take a prudent and a good fiscal approach to this and look at the, and since we have the opportunity to, because we, we did finish 2021 very strong, that we do look at raising that fund balance policy and move that number up to 40% and actually do strive to move it forward. And so I would like to see us move it up in 2022 to 40%. You heard Jackie talk about, and it was in the management report, that we're at 44. And that additional 4%, I'd like to, to, the city manager and myself will come back with a recommendation on June 7th, one with the formalized change in the policy, the fund balance policy, just on the general fund component to it. And then addition, some recommendations of utilizing those one-time dollars of that 4%, which amounts to approximately, I'm just going to say about $300,000. There are some needs that we have that's been discussed and I think we'd like to bring that, those items forth for the city council's consideration. So with that, I'll entertain any questions and comments.
Going through everything, you know, that 800,000, what would you, were we very conservative in our budgeting for 2021 that we came up with that number, do you think? Or is there things coming out of COVID that we weren't able to do that we could be doing? Staffing levels, I know possibly, I mean, that number is, you know, it's a pretty significant number and am I asking the question right or?
Yeah, no, you are. The majority of that $800,000 came from increased revenues. Really, the majority of that was on the permitting side, which is something that isn't, I'm going to say necessarily reliable moving into the future, but it was much, much higher than we had anticipated or budgeted.
So that's the construction or?
Yeah. And on the expenditure side, some of that savings, one we identified today, the $100,000, we've already taken that out of the budget for this year. So we won't see that component in there. And again, based upon my projections and, and, you know, they're preliminary and they're the best guess for where we're at at the end of March, our expenditure side was only about $70,000 under budget. It's our revenue side again, because of permitting is still doing very well for us above, and again, we do, we try to, try to do conservative estimates. We certainly don't want to put the city in a position where we don't have enough money to do our operation and we end up having to have bigger spikes in tax levies for our residents.
And I would just like to point out to the new council members that this is probably one of the, I wouldn't say confusing part, but it takes years to understand, I think, the budget. You know, it's because we get new finance directors and, and how it's presented and stuff, so it's, I just wanted.
A good thing or a bad thing, I have a little confusion.
Right. Well, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Thorson.
Well, I disagree. I don't think it's hard to understand, but that's just my opinion. I guess in an ideal world, we wouldn't need to transfer any money out of our enterprise funds and we wouldn't be reliant at all on intergovernmental transfers, local government aid. There's a lot of cities, Van Nuys Heights, they don't get a dime. We choose to operate with that. We choose to operate with that. If, if, you know, we could explore that, I think in the past they have, but they've been very controversial and upsetting topics that, you know, one was contracting the, the police services with Ramsey County. It was never seriously considered. It was just a budgetary discussion. But that still gets brought up today because we went, you know, what, what does, and the reason why was because it was in 2011 and they were talking about making serious cuts to local government aid. And that put us in a position to, to say, well, we need to see what does that look like? And we did make some tough decisions, closing the community center was one of them, building up a LGA reserve fund, but I know now that's not what it's called, but it's essentially fund balance now. But that was in anticipation of if, from things we can't control, they take away $1.3 million, what are we going to do? How are we going to react? And it gives us some time. But, you know, I don't think that's a bad thing to have those discussions and no worst-case scenario, what are we going to do? I know, I personally don't want to see the police department leave. I don't want to see the fire department leave. I don't want to see us contract out public work services. And we were told that when we, when that exercise happened, mind you, I wasn't on council at the time, but, you know, the Washington County, Ramsey County, they both said, you're better off having your own police services. You have more control and, and there's various pros and cons, but, so, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, I think it's good that we, you know, raise that balance and then continue on and establish fund balances in the enterprise funds, knowing that it's not a requirement, but it just makes sense to do because it helps us with the budgeting discussions and then goals and where we want to be. Because oftentimes in the past, that has been used as an excuse to raise funds or raise fees. We just, we don't have enough money in the fund balance, but what does that mean? You know, we don't have a fund balance policy, you know? So it will be good for conversations moving forward that we explore that, but I'm supportive of, of what you're proposing, 40% with the goal of being near 50.
I'm going to pick your brain. Didn't we experiment with, we like, we didn't rely on the LGA one year or, didn't we ever do that? I don't, maybe I imagined that.
No, we just said, oh, let's see that we're going to, we, we went away, we went away from it.
Yeah, okay, that's what it was.
Well, I know we just reduced to, I mean, we get 1.8 million, correct? Currently?
Approximately 1.3.
Well, I thought it was higher in that we only allocate the full, you know, we used to allocate the full percentage that we would get into the general fund.
Yeah, we're about 1.5, 1.3 comes into the general fund, the rest is, yeah.
So there was a certain amount that we said, okay, well, we're going to set this aside.
Yes.
And LGA reserve fund got built up, then we, we no longer did that. I think that's what you're talking about.
Correct, yeah. And the, and the fund is actually, I think it's what's known as the capital reserve or capital replacement, but yeah.
One more topic or is that it?
That's the last finance topic for tonight. We do have one more topic for the workshop and that is the proposed sign ordinance changes that have gone through a number of bodies. And so I'd ask Brandy Howe, our planner from WSB, to give a presentation on those changes. Thank you.
Welcome, Brandy.
Thank you, mayor and city council.
Thank you, Dan, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this fairly brief since many of you have already heard this presentation. As was mentioned, the city planning commission has been working on the sign ordinance update since about last October. And this project came about for a couple of reasons. The primary one is to make sure that it's in conformance with the Reed versus the Town of Gilbert Supreme Court decision, which prohibits communities from regulating content. And most cities across the country have had to update their ordinances since 2015. In addition, the project is being undertaken to help improve clarity and simplify the ordinance overall and then eliminate regulations that are just unnecessary and then strengthening, strengthen those that the community wants to focus on. So we have taken the ordinance and kind of, we're scrapping it and starting over and we're pulling those main provisions that the plan commission has determined should remain. And so those items that are the same are the way that we measure sign area and sign height. We are keeping a 10-foot setback for permanent signs. All signs must still be maintained in good repair and safe condition. And then multi-tenant buildings must always provide a master sign plan, as is currently provide, or required. What's going on here?
Uh-oh.
Okay. So what is different? We've got a side-by-side comparison. So the existing ordinance requires applicants to get a permit for all sign types, whether it's a temporary sign or a permanent sign. The new ordinance, we're only going to require permits for permanent sign structures that are going to be, you know, put into the ground or attached to a building. Sign heights are going to be limited based, or, yep, sign heights will be based on the type of sign. And before, in the current ordinance, there's a maximum height of 25 feet in the MU districts, so all of your commercial districts, and then six feet in the residential districts. So we're trying to make it a little bit more streamlined so that it makes, makes sense based on the sign type. And then the dimensional standards are pretty close to what they are now, but we're lowering the maximum, which is required in the MU 3 district from 400 square feet down to 300 square feet. And in the current ordinance, there is no process for appeals and so we have created that and they will be taken to the planning commission and they will provide a recommendation with final decision by the city council. So here's an exhibit that shows the existing sign code matrix in comparison to what is proposed. And the existing sign code matrix is only for the commercial districts, so there's a similar one for residential districts. So as you can see on the right, it's much simpler and it's a little bit easier to administer for staff. But in general, the maximum aggregate sign area is basically the same. We're no longer, however, referring to the square footage of the buildings or the area of the wall specifically for dimensional standards. And so the next couple of signs will go, or sorry, slides will go sign by sign type in terms of what's old and what's new. So roof signs in the existing code are only permitted in your downtown district and they're not addressed in the rules table, so height is presumably 25 feet from, from grade. So in the new code, we're allowing these in all non-residential districts and we're limiting it to six feet in height from the roof, which is based on this Love's ice cream store sign. Illuminated signs are not presently permitted in your, in your code in any district. And so we're going to open that up and allow illuminated signs, internally illuminated signs in your non-residential districts. Monument signs are not permitted downtown, except for civic uses and anywhere else, they have a maximum height of 25 feet. In the proposed code, we're going to let, let monument signs be allowed in any non-residential district and for multifamily uses in any district. And then they can only be eight feet tall instead of 25 feet. The existing code has a definition for an electronic message sign, but it doesn't have any regulation specific. So we have created those and they will be permitted in any non-residential, allowed for any non-residential district, sorry, land use. So a school in a residential district could have one and churches too. Yep. And then they would also be allowed in the non-residential districts. We have established regulations based on how long the message can dwell, brightness, and then the text size based on the speed with which the street is limited. Window signs in your existing code are required, I'm sorry, they are allowed, but with a permit. And they can have up to 20% of the window area covered. In the new code, we are not requiring permits, again, for the temporary signs. And then the maximum number, I'm sorry, the maximum percentage of window coverage would be 33%. And that would apply to both temporary and permanent signs. So neon sandwich board, feather signs and political signs. In your old, old code, neon signs would be limited to 20% of the window area. And the new code, we're not specifically regulating neon signs, but if they're placed in the window, then they would apply to the window, window sign regulations. Sandwich boards, we're basically keeping these regulations the same, which is one per business and it must, must not be bigger than 10 square feet or four feet tall, but we're adding that it has to stay out of the right of ways, or out of the walking path. It can be on the sidewalk, though. Feather signs are not addressed in the existing code and in the new code, we're allowing them, but with two per site and there has to be at least 100 feet separation between them. And then political signs in the existing code, they are allowed. There is a time limit before and after the election. And based on the Reed versus Gilbert case, we're not specifically regulating political signs, but they're treated like a non-permanent sign and you can have it in your yard without any time limit. Billboard signs, they'll continue to be prohibited as will rotating signs. Inflatable signs are not currently regulated, but we've added that as a definition and we will not allow those. And off-premise signs are not specifically regulated in the new code, or in the old code, but we're going to prohibit those in the new code. And that is the end of the presentation. I will take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Brandy? Go ahead.
One quick one. Is there any provision to the maintenance of the signs that's in here?
There, there is. We do require maintenance, that they must be kept in the clean and the typical language. It might even be from your same code.
Okay, thank you.
I think we went through down at Window World where the sign was, they moved the, the road so you couldn't see the sign and they asked for it to be higher than 25 feet. So there is a provision in there that could, that could appeal to the planning commission.
Oh, this is something that did come up last week, yes. So I had some conversations with Elaine, the plan commission chair offline, and as we have it proposed right now, we were going to pull it, pull the sign code out of the zoning ordinance. And in doing so, that kind of eliminates the option for variances. So we're going to discuss that at the next plan commission meeting, whether or not to, to keep it pulled out or to put a, keep it in the ordinance, in the zoning ordinance. And that way we can have that, the variance process in addition to the appeal process. Because I don't know if the appeal would be the route to go after some thought last week in terms of deviation from the regulations.
I just think there should be provision in there to allow someone who, you know, doesn't meet the code, that there's circumstances within the city that they might be able to appeal and get approval, so.
Yep. Well, that'll be up for discussion at our plan commission meeting.
Councilmember Thorson.
I know that we were short on time. That was also one of my points is just there's some sort of, you know, a process to request if you're, this is kind of a land use issue in the sense that if it's your building and the way it's positioned or located, then it's restricting your use in doing a sign if they have a way of, a variance process, but that's good to hear. I just had Nat and Jada down going in this, like, you know, neon signs, we don't see many of them and I recall a controversial, it was the old dental office, he wanted to put dentist neon sign and it looked great and it was cool, but, you know, our, I don't know if it was our sign ordinance, obviously it must have been that didn't allow it. Eventually did go in, but I just kind of questioned, well, you know, why, why would be, we be so restrictive on something like that? And window coverage area too. You know, some businesses have a lot of window space and others don't. If they choose to utilize that to do their advertising for their business or their deals, I think, you know, like bars in particular, if they put neon signs inside the window or, you know, two-for-one deal or whatever they want to do, it's their business. What, what's the criteria for limiting the amount they can cover the window?
The criteria? Well, this was a topic that the plan commission, planning commission was, spent several meetings discussing. So it's currently limited to either 20 or 25%. And so they're, they're increasing that to 33%. And the, you know, it's just really based on window area, so that's the only criteria that there is. The rationale for that, baby steps towards less regulation, I would assume, if that's something that the council would like to see a little bit, have less regulation attached to it, that could be up for consideration.
I just, I guess, I get confused as to, you know, if we're going to say, you know, your, your business has lots of windows, you can only cover 33% of them with signage. Like, why do we care if they want to cover their whole entire window with, you know, graphic wraps or whatever they have, window tint is semi-visible or transparent? I mean, if that's what they want to do, I mean, versus right next door, there could be the same building that doesn't have windows and then they put a sign on there, you know, they don't have the same restrictions in a sense because it's not a window, but I, I don't, just seems to be restrictive. But I'm, I like everything I've seen there, that we're going more towards being less restrictive and more, you know, because, you know, other than a few instances, I don't ever see signage being a controversial topic in town.
It can be in some communities, but it hasn't been so far here.
And when it is, it's more personal, you know, I don't like the way that looks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? How do we make a rule and then, you know, that person moves away or, you know, it, it just kind of, you know, subjective or, you know, so it's hard to, to make rules based off of certain people's opinions where others may differ, but I'm glad to see that this is, you know, moving along in a more flexible area.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Roy.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Brandy, and, and the planning commission as well. They put a lot, a lot, a lot of time looking through and thumbing through the entire document, thinking about, you know, even how compliance will respond to it. So they've done a really great job.
Thank you.
So a question, Brandy, could you remind us, and I think I know the answer, of what comes next with this and the timing of that?
Yep. So the next plan commission meeting will be June 2nd, where I will bring them the draft resolution, I'm sorry, the draft ordinance in the format within which the, this body would act on it. And then we will hold a public hearing with the plan commission and at their July meeting and that would come back to you at your third meeting in July. Sorry, your third week meeting in July. It's been a long day.
Three weeks. Crazy. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it? Any other questions? If not, motion to adjourn. By councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I got pictures of other neighborhoods very similar to yours.
Mm-hmm. Mine's reoccurring, though. It doesn't even need to storm like that. Doesn't have to storm like that. If it's just a prolonged rain, it just fills up down there. My neighbors are like, what is going on down here? They had no clue when they moved in. You know, they're confused. He'd be here, but he frickin' works weird hours, so he can't. So, you know, it's not fun down there, man. I haven't slept since Thursday. Thank you.
Sean. Uh, John Schmal. Welcome, John.
Evening, Mayor Council. Last time I was up here, I said something about where do you find the plan for Ariel? You said something to the effect it'll be on the website. There's nothing on the website, so, you know. Where the plan, what does it look like, you know? You guys even asked when Morgan was here, you know, what do you have up here to show how this thing is supposed to look? And Morgan didn't have anything. So is there something? Where the sidewalk, how far does the sidewalk go? A plan, you know, you can look at, say, is there a plan?
I understand.
Okay.
There's a plan.
There's gotta be a plan.
City manager.
And I don't know the answer to the question. I had, um, I'd have to go back to the minutes of the last time we discussed this. I had hoped I would get a phone call or something, but I don't know. And I don't know if our communications person knows. So I don't have a good answer for you tonight.
Time is a-wasting here. Just.
You wanna see the plan?
Yeah, I'd like to see the plan. Where does the sidewalk go? Does it go all the way up the hill? Does it go, you know, it's a week.
I'll ask our engineer, Morgan, if you can.
I'd like to see it, see it.
John needs to see something.
I'm a visual person.
That he needs to touch and look at.
A visual person. Hi, how are you doing?
Mayor, members of the council, so I'd be happy to email Mr. Schmal's, the plan set, if I can get the full copy from the city of Maplewood, or the pertinent plan sheets specific to Ariel, North St. Paul, and the sidewalk.
Morgan was not here at the last meeting.
I understand that visuals help. We had a technical glitch at the last meeting. But just to answer the question, the sidewalk will be constructed within that striped shoulder on the east side of the road from Ninth Avenue up to Seventeenth Avenue is the extensive.
Or down to Seventeenth.
Down north. Depends on your context there, but yes. So that's the general location, but I'll get Mr. Schmal's email address. I'll send it to him. We'll take care of that.
And why not all the way to the apartments? I mean, it just blows my mind that it doesn't continue all the way to the cul-de-sac where the apartments, people from the apartments can walk out their door and get on the sidewalk and walk down the hill.
So the extent of the sidewalk was based on actual observations of pedestrian use in the area walking on the side of the road?
Somehow they levitate.
In conjunction with the comprehensive plan in terms of what was planned.
You don't really like to engage, but, John.
Anyway.
Go ahead.
And, okay, that's that part of it. And the other thing is your module, an open gov, dealing with zoning permits and the ability to file a complaint. And you can do it in the system, but you gotta be taught by Carrie how to do it, because it's not easy. Because I walked in with my phone and first of all, she says, what do you have? Why are you doing this on the phone? Well, the pictures are on the phone. That's why I'm doing it on the phone. And so she goes, well, here, this is the way you do it. Zip, zip, keep, no, no, keep going, keep going, keep going. Until you get to the spot at the very end of the keep going that you can tap on it to go to the module. And so you can, process was for me to file a complaint because there is, there's a violation. And so I like doing that because it's, you know, it's available, do it. And so I filed a complaint and I filled in, well, I couldn't fill in the right things. Carrie had to change the module in order to include zoning as one of the things you could actually complain about. So that's in there. So yesterday I was able to input it. And today, a question in these three people that have an email conversation. The one person asked me, well, is your name covered up in this complaint? And I said, I don't know. You know, you'd think you'd be able to make a complaint anonymously, wouldn't you? You know, a good thing to have complainants be anonymous. Well, you are not. The only record for that address is under the name of guess who? Me. Right there for God and everyone to see. You would think that it would be anonymous, but it ain't. Or there should be a warning. By the way, if you put your name down on here, it's open for everyone to see. Do you really want to proceed? Anyway. Last item is, is the wonderful CC and the community center.
Oh, okay.
And the drop in value from two million five to two million one. And I thought, that's interesting. Ramsey County, two million five, two million one, for the record for this year. So, hey, that's interesting. Let's dial up Ramsey County. They don't like talking to citizens. They do not like talking to citizens. Anyway, bottom line is, it was supposed to be reviewed this year. It's coming up for its review. But they changed the value last year. Why did you change that? Don't know. Guy who did it, no longer here. It is just crazy. But he's, the guy I talked to, Mike, I only got his first name, said the change was because it has been changed from classification as a library to a racquetball court. And racquetball courts are valued differently than a library.
Cheaper.
Who knows?
Who knows, who knows.
Anybody here know that it's now a racquetball court?
Nope.
Oh, you do know, no, it's a racquetball court. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Lawrence. Welcome, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So my name is Bob Lawrence. I'm a Woodbury resident. I'm currently the.
That's okay.
I, I know, I apologize. I snuck in. I'm currently the president of the Hillmary Fathers Club. And I just wanted to thank you and tell you how excited we are to partner with the city and with Max and looking forward to a good, long-term relationship.
Well, I'm glad you're here and I'm glad you guys are able to get into Max.
I am too.
It's gonna be a real good, real good deal for you guys.
It'll be good. So, thank you very much. I don't have anything to complain about.
Well, I appreciate it.
You guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, so at this time, city business action items and recommendations, I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Yes, and this is gonna be a continuation of the workshop in that it's gonna be, at least for this portion, the Finance Director Dan Winnick Show. So I would turn this over to Mr. Winnick.
Thank you, City Manager. Again, I don't do this alone, so I have a supporting cast that I'll introduce here in a second. But we're here to award the sale of the nearly $10 million general obligation bonds, Series 2022A. If you can remember back last year, on December 7th, we approved the current and final plan right now of the capital improvement plan, or 10-year capital improvement plan incorporated into there are these items that we turned into a street reconstruction plan. We held a public hearing on April 5th of this year. The reconstruction plan includes a number of areas and projects. One, which we heard today about the Ariel Street with Maplewood. On April 19th, the City Council adopted a resolution authorizing Baker Tilly to proceed with the negotiation of a sale of bonds of approximately $10 million. We'll be utilizing, in addition to the bond sale, we'll be using our ARPA funds, which is a little over $1.3 million. And then we'll also have some city funds. Part of these projects include the annual maintenance amount that we budget for, for street maintenance that was also included in these project bids. So we'll be using those funds for the total project. The total project, you know, in addition to the $10 million, will come up to about just under $12 million of total project worth. These bonds of approximately $10 million, approximately $4.6 million is street reconstruction bonds. The remaining $5.4 million is backed, they're revenue bonds backed by our utilities. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly to kind of talk to us about the results of the sales of those bonds today.
Welcome, Michaela. It's awfully quiet.
Sorry.
I'm having tech.
Is it ticking? I can't hear that.
So we're all done. No, I'm kidding. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, Michaela Hewitt with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, here to provide a short presentation on the results of the city's competitive bond sale, as well as the results of the credit rating related to the bond.
We have it.
It's good on our screen.
Yep, we do have it here.
Okay. There we go. So the first slide before you, this is providing kind of the, one of the main municipal indices that we look at when understanding the trends in interest rates. And you'll see here, it's reflecting the activities over the last five years. And we'll see where we are. Currently, there's been a steep incline over the last, let's say, six, seven-ish months to where we are today. But again, this is just to give an average that we're still, if you look at over the five-year period, we're still in probably, I would say, average rates of what we've seen over that period, even though we're experiencing a kind of a sharp increase right now. So again, as Dan had introduced this topic, the city has issued 9.995 of general obligation improvement bonds. And the proceeds of the bond issue is to be used to finance various utility improvements and street reconstruction projects within the city. And they were identified within the city's street reconstruction project. We did include a 20-year term for the repayment debt service on the bonds. And the estimated true interest cost, or the TIC as it's referred, that we were looking at and updating our financial, the structures from last Thursday and Friday, were about 3.43%. So in, part of our role in working with the city is to facilitate the sale of the bonds. And we're proud to announce that there were five bids that were received, so it was a very competitive sale. The lowest bid was received from Northland Securities, Inc., and the actual results of their sale was 3.415, it's actually 3.419. So they initially provided the bid of 3.415. However, with some of the little bit of resizing on the bonds, level debt service, the actual rate is now 3.419, so still very close. And you'll see the range of the five bids were between 3.415 and up to 3.664. So they were all very competitive bids. These, I'll just point out, these were issued as bank-qualified, since they were less than 10 million. And that does reflect about a 20 to 30 basis point savings on the interest rate. So by following that method, we were able to result in the 3.4 of the true interest cost. So with the bond issue, there was an updated credit rating for the city. And what does that mean? We worked through standard and pores. And it is really a measure of the city's financial strength and the ability to make the debt service payments in a timely fashion. The, the results of it indicate that the higher the rating, the less likely there would be a default. And the less likely that there is the chance for a default, the lower that the interest rate is that the investors are willing to accept. So the higher the rating, typically the lower the interest rate and the less in total debt service that you'll pay. You'll see here, the city was reaffirmed their credit rating of a double A through S and P. And this is just showing the overall rates of, for all the different rating agencies. So there are comments in the updated rating report for the city, and they reflect all positive comments. The strong economy, growing market value, and continued residential development, both in the city and the surrounding metro area. Strong management, and that's reflected through good financial management practices and policies. Strong budgetary performance and with consistent operating surpluses in the annual budget. A very strong budget flexibility, meaning strong available reserves. And a very strong, that reflects, again, relates to the very strong liquidity. And finally, weak debt, and that's, that's pretty consistent with the way that we're, in Minnesota, but with the long-term planning and rapid amortization of the debt. Those are all positive attributes to the city's overall credit rating. So we always like to look at what are possible ways to increase the rating. And you'll see here, the upside scenario is that they would consider raising the rate if the economic growth or other factors that ultimately lead to the city's wealth and income metrics materially improve. And if the city's debt burden moderates despite the future borrowing plans. And again, that's following the five-year street reconstruction plan. Downside scenario, we always have to look at it, although it's unexpected, is that you could look at a reduced, lower rating if the city's operating results weaken on a sustained basis or if any of the economic metrics that are currently viewed as strong would materially weaken. So with that, I said it's a short and sweet presentation, but I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions for Michaela? City Attorney? If not, is motion to approve, to prove the sale of nine million, 995,000 dollars in general obligation bonds, Series 2022A?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And I would just add, you know, this was a short presentation, but the amount of time that Finance Director Winnick and the folks at Baker Tilly have put into this has been just amazing. You know, I've been a small part of that, but I know that they have just done great work, so thank you so much.
Michaela always does a good job. Always done a good job, so, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. City Manager Stark. Thank you, Michaela.
The next item is the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project to receive bids and award contract. And I would turn this over to City Engineer Dolly.
You know, it's kind of funny, you're, I can't see you over that computer screen there when you're sitting down over there. And I, and I thought you had left.
Surprised you. I was hiding. Thank you, City Manager Stark, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you here tonight is to consider bids received on the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project. As you just heard, this is one of the improvement projects considered within the capital improvement plan and the bond sale that you just approved. We did solicit bids from contractors with, should be on my screen there, in the areas shown on your screen. Generally, this is cured-in-place pipe lining for sanitary sewer pipes, which actually provides structural integrity, also seals against inflow and infiltration issues that we do experience within North St. Paul and our sewer system. So that helps save the public and Matt Council some additional clean water that does not need to be treated and ultimately saves everybody money. So that investment in our infrastructure not only saves us from future cave-ins or sinkholes or street repairs that might happen from old sewers collapsing, but also prevents kind of intrusion of water that does not need to be treated downstream from a wastewater standpoint. So different areas, including Casey Lake, which earlier in the year, you may recall, we did have some issues and problems. And we're anticipating that this sewer lining will help alleviate some of those concerns in that area by sealing the pipes against root intrusion. That's another benefit that I didn't mention previously. But that's some of the problems that we have in that area. Our tree roots actually growing into our sanitary sewer system, searching out the water and causing issues occasionally. So again, this improvement will also minimize maintenance and minimize some of the risks along those lines within our sewer system. So Casey Lake, we have some areas up and around, uh, I'm sorry, the high school is inset map one on the figure there. Inset map two is down and around Seventh Avenue, south of Seventh Avenue, around Helen and east of Helen. And then inset map three is another area of sewer that is just south of Seventh Avenue, kind of west of the new development area in between Margaret and Helen. So those are all areas in need. And a lot of those are identified in conjunction with either planned future pavement investment improvements or current existing ones, again, trying to protect that underground infrastructure, given the investment or planned future investment on the roadways up above. We received two bids and pleased to report that the low bid of just over $302,000 came in very close to the estimate at 302,365. The bid was actually 302,525.50. I may have never gotten so close to the low bid with an estimate thus far, so that is certainly good news. The contractor is Hydro Clean. We have worked with, or I'm sorry, Visis Sewer, sorry about that. We've worked with them as well, too, within the city of North St. Paul. So I don't have any hesitations recommending to City Council that you receive all bids and award a contract to the apparent low bidder of Visis Sewer in the amount of 302,525.50. You do have a resolution in your packet considering that receipt of bids and award of contract. And I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan? We have no questions. I'm looking for the resolution. Should be there. Got it here, got it here. Good. So the motion is for resolution accepting bids and awarding a construction contract for the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project, city project number 22-06. Is there a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any questions? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Engineer Morgan.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next item for consideration here is receipt of bids and consideration of award of contract. However, we do have slightly different circumstances with this particular project. This is for the Seventh Avenue Street and Utility Improvement Project, which is on your screen right now. The area generally confined by mid-block between, on Seventh Avenue, mid-block between Helen and Margaret and then west to First Street, also including portions of Helen Street on other side of Seventh Avenue, the intersection with Sepulveda, Fourth Avenue East, some portion of the remaining alley, which is yet to be improved, and also the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Margaret and extending north kind of to where the 2020 pavement was left off on Margaret Street. Much more complex project involving many different types of construction activity, concrete paving on Seventh Avenue, for example. A lot of different utility work, including water main, sanitary sewer, some very large trunk storm sewer on Helen Avenue, which is old and in need of replacement. As we discussed at the last council meeting, I think the mayor asked some questions. We are living within a period of volatility within the heavy construction industry right now. Spike in diesel prices, up 20 to 40% in the last couple few months. Supply chain issues, material supply with respect to precast concrete, iron and steel products, and just general concerns over labor and trucking and that sort of thing. So as we discussed last time with the council, at that time, the information was that there wasn't anything compelling to cut scope at that time. We did try some strategies with respect to allowing the contractor more time to construct the project, thinking that that might give some allowances and some flexibility. Unfortunately, the low bid that was received was approximately 20% over the estimate. So the estimate was just over $5 million. Our low bidder, which is a good contractor, is just about $6 million. So a premium of about 20%. That's not including any sort of contingencies. As you heard, with the sale of the bonds, we do have a capped funding availability program with which to work with for these planned improvements that we have that have not yet bid. We're very fortunate that up to this point, our projects have come in on budget or slightly underestimate. And so, again, with some contingencies moving forward, we're very confident that we'll have good success in terms of completing those projects within budget, again, knowing that they're capped within the bond program and for this capital improvement program. But when you get into this situation with something that is this much, you know, 20% overestimate, and then knowing that there may still be some unknowns with supply chain issues, it is of concern. And so we took a very, very, very close look at this, trying to make a determination of whether it might be worth moving forward, trying to absorb some contingencies. Would there be room under the bond program in other areas? And frankly, I just didn't feel comfortable moving forward. After consultation with Director of Public Works Richie and Finance Director Winnick, my recommendation to the council at this time is to receive the bids, however, reject them at this time, and consider repackaging this for a bid and construction in 2023. There's a couple different things that we can try to reap the benefit of in this certain situation. Number one is that we know how three good contractors within, working within the community, have priced this out at this time. And so that gives us a much more accurate indication and up-to-the-minute indication in terms of how suppliers are pricing things like precast concrete structures or pipe. It also allows us to then evaluate the future rebid on this project and build in some flexibility, like alternates. For example, the main priority here has always been Seventh Avenue. Fourth Avenue and the intersection of Margaret, I would call secondary priorities. And if we can package those in a rebid scenario such that if the bids come in similar, and I think within the industry, and there was an article in Finance and Commerce that just came out Monday of this week, the industry is saying that 18 to 24 months is probably to be expected in terms of these types of issues with pricing, inflationary measures, concerns over volatility. And frankly, also, it's important to note that, you know, this is not a greed thing by contractors. I think within the industry, we recognize that contractors are bidding defensively. Okay, so they're trying to protect themselves against fluctuations on their hard costs that they have no control on either. And they certainly don't want to be put in a situation where they're gonna lose money or not be profitable to the point where it's gonna hurt their business. So it's a very tentative situation, a repackage and a rebid and a delay of the project. In my mind, October is a good time to think about, knowing that lead time on precast right now is 20 to 28 weeks. If we were able to rebid this and find a point within the capped finance constraints for this particular project, which is just over $6.8 million, and that's total project for everything, contingencies and indirect soft costs, knowing that we will be able to either award alternates or subtract alternates to be able to find that sweet spot from a funding standpoint, we'll be in a much more comfortable position financially. There'll be less risk for the city. And again, knowing that there's a hard cap there, I think that's really, a really important consideration and something that I don't feel should be taken lightly and certainly not something that I'm going to risk recommending moving forward on just without very strong consideration here, which is why I'm kind of explaining all these things. In addition, I think that, you know, we took, again, another real tight look at every single line item, how all the different contractors bid. I think, you know, I found one item that could have been estimated slightly stronger. Again, when we estimate more quantity, we reduce or remove risk that there might be additional costs on a project. So again, that repackaging will allow us to even tighten things up further. So again, that repackaging will allow us to even tighten things up further, minimize the risk for the project overall. And again, try to hit that $6.8 million for a total project cost without consideration of trying to find other sources of revenue, which aren't there right now, right? We're, we're working within the confines of a bond sale that has said, this is what we have for street improvements, for water, for sewer, that sort of thing. So we want to be very respectful of that. One additional benefit is that it will help the car show, I think, in this year, in 2022, by being able to fully access Margaret Street and Seventh Avenue through the season, while we focus on existing contractual obligations and construction in the surface parking lot, which is ongoing right now, off of Sixth, south of Seventh, also work over by the high school and in addition on Ariel Street, as we just discussed earlier. So we do have plenty of things to be working on and concentrating to make sure that the contractors do a good job. Again, I think that it's fully reasonable that substantially the work would be completed in 2023, which is not much different than what we talked about in this bid solicitation. It would just be tightened up. We would have some work that would occur in 2024 in terms of final lift of asphalt paving and that sort of thing. But again, the goal would be to complete the work on, in these areas to the greatest extent within the financial constraints that we have in calendar 2023 and coordinate with folks like the Car Show and other people, public downtown separately. And importantly, on this, this project alone, without other kind of overlapping concerns, such as the parking lot, which is in fairly near proximity. So with that, the resolution that I prepared in your packet is not for award of contract, but for receipt of the bids and rejecting the bids with consideration for a future rebid. Again, my plan would be in an October timeframe with that 28-week lead time on precast concrete and some ductile products like fittings and hydrants and that sort of thing. If we have a contractor under contract in October, for example, they can lock in their pricing, they can set their orders. We can even pay them materials on hand, and they can store that through the winter so that we capture the pricing at that time if it does move forward and up between October and 2023. And then they can pull that stuff out and build it in 2023, and we'll have a known cost at that time. So that's the approach. I think it's a good recommendation, giving all the different scenarios that we're dealing with and the volatility of the market right now. And I'll stand for any questions that the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan?
Councilmember Thorson? So we're delaying the project because we're over budget, is what you're saying?
That would be, yes.
And scaling back?
Potentially.
Won't help getting it done this year as planned? Like, do we have to do Fourth Avenue and Margaret a part of this? I mean, I, it's just, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but it's frustrating because, you know, we're trying to stay in this, this schedule because there's so much of the city that needs to get done. I mean, back in 2018, or I believe it was 2019, it was Gerald, Shawnee, Chippewa Avenue, around Casey, Casey Park. And then that got delayed because of the downtown, you know? And then this is taking precedent over that area, and there's other areas that continue to get worse and worse. And so now it's, I'm hearing we're not, we're just not gonna, even, we're doing Ariel, but it's not a whole reconstruct. We're kind of getting off of that schedule, and we're falling further behind. And the problems are just going to continue to compound and get worse when we delay these road projects. So I mean, I guess I'm a little, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, it seems like there should be an option to, you know, I suppose it's too far late now to, to look at another area of the city that needs to get done. But just the whole idea of, of just putting it off for a year and not doing anything else kind of doesn't sit well with me. That's my thoughts.
Councilmember Wong?
Thank you, Morgan, for your analysis. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering in terms of funding, so if, if we were not to reject it, where would you get the funding from?
So a large portion of the overage, if you want to call that, in terms of exceedance of estimate is in the, some, some of it is in the streets, some of it is across the board in the utilities. But a major portion of it is in the streets. So the streets, as you know, are funded, I mean, not only with the bond funds, but that impacts the general tax levy as opposed to, you know, enterprise funds for like surface water or water utility or for sanitary sewer. So it would have to be a combination across the board with which to make up that difference. Based on, you know, just rough projections in terms of if we awarded the contract as is, right now, the planned total project cost is 6.8 million within the bond sale and within the capital improvement plan. We would be at, at or slightly over $8 million. I mean, so that, that's, you know, over a million dollars, 1.2 million dollars, let's say approximately, that some portion of that would have to be made up by the general tax levy, which would affect the general taxes for the public. Some portion of that would need to be made up with unidentified, as of right now, sources within the utility enterprise funds as well too, which would impact or affect rates more so than is currently planned or projected, I guess, for the foreseeable future, knowing that there's been a deep financial analysis on the capital improvement plan as it stands today and also the bond sale as it stands to fund these particular projects right now. So I can't answer specifically where it would come from, but those are the typical sources that, you know, if we were to move forward today, that, that's where it would have to be made up. Again, you know, if it's 5% or, you know, you know, it's a lot of money, no matter how you look at it. But if it's an overage that's slightly less, and we've navigated that before, and it's something that from a staff standpoint, there's some level of comfort that we can, you know, make that up or we can absorb that. Those are the conversations that I was having last week after bids were opened and, you know, do we think that that's reasonable? At a 1.2 million dollar premium, that just seems too strong to be able to try to power through, in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you for considering all the different contributions of, you know, different pockets of money. As we look at the infrastructure funding coming from the federal government, do you know of any, you know, allocations or priorities that that money is going to be allocated to here on the more local level?
So it's coming. There's still information that we don't have yet in terms of where, how that's going to be coming down. For example, our understanding is that for drinking water, for clean water, that's going to be distributed through basically the same accounts or, I guess, vehicles by which they distribute the legacy funds. And so, you know, this project hasn't been, you know, earmarked or identified specifically for those funds. But certainly, I think there's opportunities moving forward for future projects, whether that is within this bond program or future projects. For example, you know, the next ones that are on the docket are up by Casey Lake in terms of streets and utilities, in terms of a two-phased approach to address those areas. So that could be a category, but we won't know if that will be surface water specific only or a combination of surface water and water utility, meaning drinking water, those are two main components. And there may be some available for reconstruction of local streets as well too. But we won't know specifically until we have more information available with which to identify those priority projects, you know, make applications. And our understanding is that those are all going to be competitive as well too. So there will be a lot of other local agencies applying for the same dollars.
Thank you. Do you have a timeline in which that may or may not come?
Maybe, is Michaela still here? I'm hoping that sometime soon here, that, you know, the, the federal government has identified the funds. We know, we know that it's coming. We know it's been authorized by the federal government. But it does take some time to actually allocate and get those dollars to the states. And the states are responsible then, either through DOT programs or otherwise, to be able to distribute those down. Unknown whether or not some of those will be prioritized, for example, to state aid streets, which Seventh Avenue is a state aid street, but Masabi Avenue, for example, in the Casey Lake area is not, right? So there may be some qualifications that we're going to need to pay close attention to. I would anticipate that in the coming months, we should get some more information. But there's been no guarantees or qualifications in terms of when we're going to hear exactly and what. But it will be highly followed by all engineers, especially at the local level.
Thank you, Morgan.
Are there any maintenance we can do in the meantime, between now and then, that, like Councilmember Thorson said? There's a lot of needs, and I notice even my neighborhood's not even on here, and it's, it is really bad. The Casey Lake area is getting really bad. Is there anything we can do that?
So, yeah, in these, in the bond identified projects, there are some areas that are identified. And these were gone through by Public Works last year, actually, and identified in terms of first tier, second tier. I think there always has to be care when a project area is identified for a significant investment or reconstruction, because if you're going to place a Band-Aid on something, you know, you don't want it to cost too much because then that's going to be undone and redone. On the flip side, that can also, also buy you a few years and save some money in terms of pothole patching and that sort of thing. So with respect to the Casey Lake neighborhood, for example, you know, those roads are certainly beyond, I would say, expected ideal candidates for a maintenance overlay because they are ready for reconstruction right now. However, given, you know, the need and the concern for just the timing of everything and inflationary costs, it may, may be worth considering, looking at where some of those other maintenance dollars were planned to be spent outside of these projects, but just by Public Works in terms of, you know, doing maintenance overlays, which is heavier duty than pothole patching, but less duty than like a reconstruction, for example. But again, that may buy us some time. It's not gonna, when you overlay over a road that is maybe cracked or failed, some of those cracks will come through. And again, that's the balancing act of not spending too much. So maybe we don't do a full mill and overlay, knowing that there's not much of a road left to mill. But we certainly could look at potentially an overlay. It will crack, but it might save some time or give some time with respect to bridge that timeline from now until, I don't know what's in the plan. I believe it was 2024 for the first portion of Casey Lake, right? Which is not included in, in this bond sale, but that would have to be a consideration for a separate future bond sale for either one or both of the Casey Lake half and half projects, which started out as one project. But then based on the costs, it was decided a few years ago to try to split that into two.
So would you take a reassessment?
I can.
In the meantime, and take a look and see if there are areas?
I was just shared a photo from a resident on, I think it was Masabi or maybe Gerald. And I haven't talked to Public Works yet, so I don't know what they've committed to where outside of these projects that I've been working on. But we can see if it makes sense, maybe not for the whole area, but maybe the worst street or the worst streets, again, to try to get them addressed and covered up in a temporary fashion without too much of an investment to be able to get, you know, even one or two years would be helpful if we can get a couple few years in a little more comfort level and understanding from the public that, you know, we're, we're trying to do the best we can until we can get there to fully reconstruct them. It's certainly worth considering, given the fact that, you know, this, the city Public Works does have kind of a, a set budgetary number year after year with which to work with. So maybe this year, if not this year, maybe next year. And I think we can certainly see how that works within a prioritization strategy. I mean, any plan is certainly subject to change and reevaluation based on whatever might happen at any given moment, a series of water main breaks. You know, we've had, we actually did an overlay of, oh my gosh. 2016, it was, it was at 18th?
19th?
Or 19th, it was, so it was something where, it was scheduled for work that year. And that spring, for whatever reason, it kind of exploded, and we had to do a block or a block and a half just to hold it together for a few months. So what I'm thinking is, you know, this might be a reprioritization that's a little more planned out than that. That was kind of an emergency situation. We couldn't have the road go to, to gravel necessarily, even though it was already, you know, planned for reconstruction. You know, we don't want people having difficulty driving through the area. And every spring thaw, spring snow melt and thaw, you know, those potholes are kind of problematic and can be issues for Public Works to keep up with from a pothole patching standpoint. So I will convene with Public Works, and we can see if, if, from a funding standpoint, from a reprioritization standpoint, if some of those other areas might warrant being folded into the mix, knowing that we have delayed some of the other project areas and also knowing that we've got some late-breaking concerns that are later information than we had last year when those maintenance areas were kind of identified. So I think that's a fair effort.
Any other questions for Morgan? Councilmember Thorson?
So this particular project, they're coming in around 1.2 million over what your initial plan was. Is that correct?
For total project cost, that was, that was the projection, correct?
And how much was on Ariel, the addition of the sidewalks? I tried pulling that up, I couldn't find it. What was that addition?
It was estimated at 275. The bids came in at about 225 for the sidewalk add.
And the hope is that we delay this and then rebid it later in October, that at that time, it's going to come in lower?
The projection within the industry is that the inflated prices and supply chain issues are expected to continue for the next 18 to 24 months with now, not any significantly identified like relief, right? So the idea is to be able to rebid, to be able to find that spot within the project identified budget of 6.8 million dollars so that we can have an improvement area, but not have a contractual obligation to complete something that we don't have the funding for.
So it would, it would be rebidding, but it would be scaled back?
Right.
What, so I'm looking at Margaret. Part of that road is concrete, part of it's asphalt, part of the concrete's been patched with asphalt. Sections of asphalt have been replaced with, I mean, it's just a hodgepodge from Silver Lake down to hallway. Is this section here that is highlighted, is that a section that's currently concrete that's slated to be replaced with concrete?
I think portions of it are asphalt, but the original plan, prepared under previous city manager, was for that concrete to come down up to and, including the intersection of Fourth Avenue. It doesn't have to be. We certainly could stop the concrete where it is right now and continue from there on.
And obviously, sorry, I know all the benefits of concrete versus asphalt, so we don't need to get into that. But, you know, if we're looking for cost savings, you know, why wouldn't we consider that? I mean, I don't, you know, is that section of Margaret such a high-traffic area that it merits having concrete versus other parts of, of the city that are possibly more traffic, more, you know, that don't have as much? What am I trying to say here? I mean, I don't, what, what are the criteria for having concrete on a road section? And, and is this one that falls into that? And even if it is, knowing that, yes, asphalt does not last as long in theory, because there's all sorts of things that can cause concrete to fail earlier that we've seen in town. But, you know, is that being considered as well? Like, maybe instead of using concrete in all these sections, we, we go to asphalt? Does that help us get under the, you know, the financial problem we're having here?
It certainly will help. I mean, so, you know, the life cycle cost for asphalt versus concrete over 60 years, let's say, is about the same. But on concrete pavement, you're upfronting all that cost. And there's very little, if any, maintenance moving forward on asphalt. You do have to kind of stay on top of it with ceiling cracks and overlays and that sort of thing. So the initial capital investment would be lower for asphalt. In my opinion, there's no reason why you couldn't leave the extents or the limits of the concrete pavement where they are now and do the rest of this as asphalt. We are simply following the plan as kind of originally conceived. And I had assumed that that was maybe discussed with the council. My understanding is that's more of a, it was more of an aesthetic and My understanding is that's more of a, it was more of an aesthetic and gateway into downtown kind of approach, so that at the intersection of Fourth, which is a transitionary place between the residential area coming north on Margaret into what was the 2020 redevelopment area, and then with the Sentinel Building, and then ultimately to Seventh Avenue, which has historically all been concrete and was thoroughly discussed by council in terms of concrete versus asphalt. And the decision at that time on Seventh Avenue was to keep the concrete areas of pavement concrete. But certainly, if council wanted to give that direction to staff and move forward with, you know, the rebid of the project on Margaret Street to keep that as asphalt, that's an easy change and would be expected to maybe save for that segment of roadway, potentially 20 to 30%. That's just off the top of my head.
20 to 30%?
On that area of roadway, correct.
Well, I mean, if we can do what we did on Ariel, request a bid with and without a sidewalk, I don't see, because to me, from what I'm hearing is this, this project is going to get delayed because of cost overages. Part of that is concrete in areas that, again, I know the, in theory, concrete lasts longer than asphalt, but a main factor is aesthetics, you know? Meanwhile, the road is completely, I mean, when you're driving home tonight, drive that section of Margaret. Take that down to South Avenue, wherever you're going home, and tell me that that road can be delayed because of aesthetics. I mean, it's, again, I just, this doesn't sit well with me delaying a project area that needs to get done, especially when we could have done another area that needs to get done. So, yeah, hopefully, we can, you know, sharpen our pencils and look at all the options and not just one, because there's more than one way to pave a street.
Is there a way to bid that out?
Absolutely. If council's okay with that being asphalt, we can do it either or. Or just move to asphalt in entirety, so it's whatever council's comfortable giving direction on.
I'd like to hear from the council in regards to, or more discussion on it. Councilmember Y.
Just from a process standpoint, Morgan, you talked about rebidding this in October. Would, as part of that rebidding process, would you come back to the city council again? Or is this the, kind of the opportunity?
No, we can come back if we want more discussion on that. That's up to the council. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. If we want to have a deeper discussion on the scope and how we want to bid this, I think that would be appropriate. Doesn't have to be.
And at that time, we would know what the cost savings would be. Councilmember Y.
Yeah, can you speak to a little bit of the maintenance piece of asphalt by Public Works? What that would kind of play out to be, how much capacity would we have to pay for?
Kind of the regular maintenance life cycle of asphalt? Or what Public Works has currently been doing in terms of trying to address areas?
Yeah, just looking at whether, you know, if we were to look at an asphalt sidewalk, what would the maintenance cost of that be compared to a concrete?
We were talking about street pavement. I wouldn't necessarily recommend asphalt for sidewalks. I mean, for a couple of different reasons. We need to control the grades, and that's much more easy with concrete versus asphalt. But in a general sense, asphalt is not jointed like concrete. It's a flexible pavement. It's designed to flex, and it will crack at some point. And in terms of the regular maintenance that the city has been really good about keeping up on in terms of the streets that we've reconstructed since 2014, is every three to five years to seal the cracks. So you may have seen that around town where they kind of put the tar in the cracks, and they put toilet paper, and it looks a little silly for a little while until that wears off. But that actually, although it's not pretty to look at, it does provide a great amount of benefit, especially when we're sealing kind of the edges where the water runs. That keeps the water out of the subbase underneath the pavement. When you have cracks, some of that runs in there. If those cracks are left too long, that can actually contaminate that subgrade, the gravel underneath, and sometimes you wind up with tenting, which we've seen on Helen Avenue, which we had to address in 2016, and I think 2017, we finished the rest of Helen, north of 36. And so by keeping the cracks sealed, then the general kind of next thing that you would see at about 15 years plus or minus would be a mill and overlay. That would be similar to some of these maintenance overlays. These maintenance overlays are a little bit more simplistic than regular mill and overlay, but that's generally just grinding off the top portion of the project and resealing the top. There's still some cracks underlying that will reflect through over time. But again, you stay on top of those every three to five years. Generally, on average, about every 15 years, you're overlaying while you're sealing cracks in between. And by the time you get to year, depending on a lot of different factors, 60 plus or minus, you've overlaid it a few times and enough times that it's generally a candidate for full reconstruction again. If at any point in those maintenance areas, we have things like a section of settled concrete curb and gutter or failed concrete or something, we might replace that. That was the general scope for Ariel, right? A little bit more in-depth in terms of reclamation rather than a mill and overlay, but certainly not a full reconstruct. So the goal, again, if you're staying on top of maintenance, is to have an asphalt roadway that lasts 60 years or more before it needs to be fully reconstructed. And with a concrete roadway, again, you're, you have to do less in terms of that ongoing maintenance, but you're upfronting that cost. It depends on who you're talking to, a concrete supplier, an asphalt supplier. But in my opinion, generally, if you look at it through the life cycle of either kind of road, it does come out about the same. But again, some of that's upfront, less maintenance, which does have an impact on Public Works operations, too, if there's less maintenance involved there. But in general, when you get southern Minnesota, close to Iowa, Iowa, a lot of Iowa does a lot of concrete streets, a lot more than you see in Minnesota. And in Minnesota's Twin Cities, you know, it's kind of, it's preference and a little bit of each, I guess, depending on the area. As I recall, with some of the discussions downtown, again, the idea that the concrete reflects light at night kind of brightens up the downtown, that was certainly a preference. And that built off of the 1970-something initial reconstruction of Seventh Avenue that kind of set the standard in terms of concrete roadway pavement. So that's the general asphalt program. Now, those, every 15 years or three to five years, that can flex different streets, depending on whether they were built on swamps versus built on a gravel pit will last longer or less as long, depending on, and also depending on weather and the timing of freeze thaw, things that happen in the spring. But that's the general approach. Some of what Public Works has been doing for the last few years, I would say, in terms of maintenance overlays, which started up on 15th by the Richardson School, which is a very successful application of just a minimal mill on the sides and then overlay just on top of the road with very little milling in the middle and filling, patching and kind of supporting where you needed to in the middle of the road. That's performing really well. Looks good. You know, it's not just an overlay that we think will only get like one or two or three years out of, and that road wasn't in great shape before that. And so the hope is that for modest investment in that kind of an improvement that we can help make strides to be able to plan for the significant investments, you know, where it's needed most, depending on all the factors that, you know, council has to consider with these things.
Thank you.
Is it the same lay, is it different from a residential street to something more of a commercial street like this? The asphalt, are you laying heavier asphalt than what you normally would lay, like, on a side street?
Yeah.
Residential street?
So that was one of the things I had to go to school for, was actually pavement design. And it has to do with the thickness of the asphalt, the thickness of the gravel underneath it. In areas of poor soils such as North St. Paul, where we have a lot of clays, we generally have to provide a section of sand underneath that that can range from 18 inches in thickness to 24 or 36 inches, depending on how bad the soils are underneath. You know, some of the areas that we reconstructed in 2014 and 2016 were of very poor soils, and some of those residential neighborhoods were actually built in areas where there are little ponds and ditches and cricks and things like that, right? And so we had to do a little more substantial section there. It's not so much the asphalt, but it's what's underneath the asphalt in terms of what you dig out and then build back up with sand and then gravel and then asphalt on top. And concrete's similar, but slightly different in that, you know, you still need a subsection underneath, but that, it's, concrete pavement is not a flexible pavement. It's rigid. And so it's designed to flex at the joints that are provided within the concrete pore itself. But it's not expected to kind of move as much as you would see on an asphalt roadway. In residential areas, I mean, I very rarely see concrete streets.
No, so is this different asphalt being laid than a residential street? Is it heavier? Or is it a bigger, thicker base? Is it?
In the commercial area, so on Helen and the approaches to Seventh Avenue, that would be a heavier-duty pavement section than what we would see on Fourth Avenue. So we do balance what we're putting, whether it's kind of considered a collector roadway versus a residential street. Knowing that Fourth Avenue, for example, other than trash collectors and school buses, maybe, is not going to be carrying as much heavy truck traffic as Helen Street would, for example, right? So those are two different pavement sections that would be planned out, included in the same project, and it's no problem for the contractor to switch back and forth. But it doesn't make any sense to build a residential street. You overbuild that, right? You build it appropriately to the amount of traffic and the type of traffic that it's expected to receive.
And I'd like to maybe see asphalt, see what that comes in at.
Yeah, I would too. I would too, just to see the cost difference.
That's easily done.
If we could bid that and see where we come in, because I agree, we need to get these projects done and... Councilmember Thorson?
Just out of curiosity, and I'm not trying to make this into a asphalt versus concrete guy, because I have no preference or investment or whatever, but...
Right.
How long have you, how long have you worked as engineer for the city?
About 12 years.
Okay. How many miles of streets do we have? Do you know that off the top of your head? I know the answer. I'm looking at it.
It's on our website.
Yeah, 43 miles.
I was going to say 40.
Okay, so I, you can approximate, but if not, I don't know. I'm not trying to give you an assignment that's going to cost a city a bunch of money. But of the 43 miles, what percentage would you say is concrete versus asphalt of our streets?
Not including...
Talking streets?
Any, you know, county roads or anything like that, just specifically limited to city streets. I'd say 10%.
10% concrete versus 90% asphalt?
Yeah, plus or minus. That's my approximation. It's really limited to Seventh Avenue.
I was going to say, so downtown.
Some consistency there?
Yeah.
And I think the reasoning is, I mean, you know, for whatever, yeah, and we talked about the aesthetics, but, you know, I think a huge driver is that is cost, right? And, you know, you go to like a state like Florida, they have beautiful concrete highways that last probably five to six times longer than a concrete section of road. Like, I'm thinking of 35W up to Duluth that gets torn up every five, six years. And, you know, concrete may be a superior product to asphalt, but in this climate and weather, I mean, it's a crapshoot. You're dealing with soil conditions and weather conditions when it's being poured. But same with asphalt that can fail, like we've seen on Helen. So, but, you know, I'll, just again, I think, you know, I want to make it clear that I would like to see some cost comparisons for this project to try to get it done here without delaying it another year.
If I could ask a question, so let's say either through value engineering or through, let's say somehow the market's changed, and you thought prices were going to be better. How quickly, if we said, oh, things have changed, our assumptions have changed, something's changed, how quickly could we get back out to bid?
Well, getting out to bid is one thing, and that shouldn't take that long, okay? That's simply a matter of repackaging, and if we want to have a deeper discussion, like at a workshop, for example, that might be appropriate. I think right now, it's the lead time on some of the things like pipe, precast structures. Some of the storm sewer pipe on Helen Street is like 84-inch custom-made stuff that, you know, would it be expected to take a significant amount of time for the manufacturer and supplier to be able to commit to providing to the city? So, for example, even if we were awarding a contract here tonight, it's a very good chance and understanding, at least in terms of what I'm hearing from all the contractors, that some portions of the project would not even be ready to be installed for several months, which limits the amount of improvement that could happen in 2022 anyway at this time. And that's a market-conditioned thing that's independent of, that's just the supply of materials at this time. For example, there's some suppliers for ductile iron fittings and hydrants that have stopped taking orders from contractors, and they're limiting their inventory to, like, if a city needs to buy a hydrant for something like an emergency, they want to have some on stock, but they're not selling to contractors. Or they're only holding their prices for two weeks, which is not really fair to the contractor if they're bidding and cities are holding their bids for 30 or 60 days with which to award and then get underway with the project, right? So we can certainly turn it around and bid it faster than October. My thought on October is that that gives ample time for a six-month lead time for ordering of materials, precast, manholes, whatever, in October, and it will be ready in May. There's no reason why it shouldn't be, right? And we shouldn't have to face any delays, knowing that they should be able to order their materials and it can, other than maybe shut down over the holidays and deer hunting season, which does occur in the construction industry. But that's my thought on October. We could bid it earlier. And the earlier you bid it, the contractors are going to be still potentially prone to defensive bidding, knowing that they don't know exactly what the price of diesel fuel, for example, will be in May of next year. Sometimes there's quantity purchases by contractors or lock-in prices with respect to asphalt mix, for example, but we won't know exactly what those will be or what they're going to be dealing with in August versus October. So October, I think, is the latest timeframe if we were going to do it before the holidays. We certainly could try in January, but again, if we awarded a contract in January or early February, which you might think would be a really great, early and competitive time to bid a project, if in fact these supply issues are continuing and we're looking at six months out for our precast structures, well, then they're not going to be able to start on work until June, as opposed to when we would want them to start, which is May 15th, when road restrictions come off, or earlier, if they can get out there earlier. So that's kind of my estimation in terms of repackaging everything quickly, and then when could a contractor get started?
And would it be possible to look at a project like this and know that, and maybe this isn't the case, it probably isn't, that this portion of the project contains a lot of things that have these lead time issues? This portion of the project doesn't have as many components that have these lead time issues, and maybe we separate them out and have two different packages?
I can look at that, and I have looked at it a little bit. Unfortunately, there's utilities under all of these roads, and the pipes and utilities are what's unfortunately constraining things rather than the paving. If this was just a simple road project without any storm sewer, for example, that might lend itself to that. We can take a deep dive on that, and we should probably pick a workshop date with which we can kind of unpeel all these things. I can talk about that. We can talk about some of the bid alternates and see how, given the fact that we have the benefit of seeing how three contractors bid this project now, and knowing that things will probably continue, you know, for the foreseeable future, be able to see how we can project something that will either deliver something, you know, sooner rather than later, if that's what the council wants to see, even if that's a smaller portion of the project, and then a bigger portion of the project later. I mean, I'm not opposed to any of that. It's always important to remember... later. I mean, I'm not opposed to any of that. Um, it's always important to remember that there are some economies of scale, so the smaller portions of a project that you peel out might, um, might not carry the benefit of volume pricing, for example. Um, and that goes to linear feat of pipe. It also goes to number of tons of asphalt. I mean, you tend to get better pricing if it's a larger quantity of whatever it is, so.
So what I'm hearing is that no matter what we do right now, twenty twenty-three is going to be part of the project for the Seventh Street because of the lead time for a lot of this material that, that you need. So no matter what we decide tonight, uh, Seventh Street is probably going to be put on hold for the summer.
We can look at options, but again, I have to always kind of think of and come to you all with, um, conservative and I think safe, if maybe the safe is not the right word, but something that's, provides a little bit more expected return on your investment than, um, speculation. I do, I'm terrible in Las Vegas. I don't like it. That's just me personally. Um, but, uh, yeah, again, that's my, my estimation.
Yep.
Now, not, not saying that there aren't some things that we can think about and look at and potentially peel off. I mean, another thing I was thinking about is the landscaping in the older portion of, of the new downtown, which was peeled out of the last project, and I know that there's some, um, need for that landscaping in the near term. Uh, you know, landscaping and plant nurseries are maybe not immune for some of the issues that we're seeing out here, but we certainly could try a smaller quote package, at least for the, um, landscaping in the older part of, uh, the Seventh Avenue project to see if we can't get that in the ground before the end of the year. Um, and there may be other pieces too, right? So I, I, knowing that we just opened bids last week and we had to present them to hear, to you today, this is, um, this is my recommendation at this time, but we can have further conversation on it and whether we bid in October or July or September or January. I mean, we can have further discussion to get to a plan where you all are comfortable, you like the different options available. We're still, I guess estimators are, engineers and estimators are subject to the latest and most recent bid information that we have available. Uh, we don't really know how contractors are going to price it until they actually do. So there's still a little bit of a, um, guessing game there, but that's why you try to build in contingencies. When bids come in, overestimate to the extent that you've already burnt through your planned contingencies, that's a red flag, and that's what we're trying to avoid moving forward.
So I'm hearing from the council that we're not opposed to the asphalt. So-
I could take that direction. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. Uh, boy, any other questions for Morgan? And you got direction?
You have a resolution-
Yep, I had, I had that right here.
-on terms of rejecting, uh, the bids received.
Yep, so the resolution is, uh, accepting bids received and rejecting all bids for the Seventh Avenue Utility and Street Improvements, uh, City Project Number Twenty-two oh-one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, so we'll wait to see.
We will schedule a workshop item with the council here moving forward in the coming weeks, uh, to have further discussion on this particular project and bidding strategies and estimates on the options moving forward.
So would it be safe to, uh, tell the car show people that?
That'll be my next phone call. I mean, Bob's not here, so I was gonna tell the person, but, um, I'll call him after tomorrow.
I think the sooner the better, they-
And the businesses too, they need to know.
Yeah, we can put some communication out to the businesses as well through Kerry. Uh, we also have our, uh, construction, our weekly construction meeting tomorrow, and I think the car show folks have been attending that, so if I, if they come to that, I can fill them in as well too. So, uh, both Bob and, um, Mr. Fabio.
Bruce. Bruce.
Yes, uh, and others, so. Uh, so thank you.
All right, Morgan, thank you. Uh, city manager?
I do have a couple of things, I'm gonna try to keep it brief. Uh, just an update on the storms last week. I know with the sunny weather we've had over the weekend, it's easy to forget how stormy it was in the earlier part of last week. Uh, but on, on Monday, um, a, a tree fell over during the storm, uh, on a van and power lines to a home and axed across the, uh, the power lines in the alley. And fire crews secured that area, advised the electric department and, um, remained on the scene until they were, until the electric, uh, crew got the scene safe. Then on Wednesday, um, at almost eleven PM, the fire department responded to a report of smell of smoke. Uh, when crews arrived, they upgraded the call to a first alarm that included Maplewood and Oakdale Fire Departments. Uh, the fire was in the attic, uh, and it was a, my understanding is the type of attic and the dimensions of it were a little challenging. Crews were on the scenes for, seen for two hours. Um, I believe it, uh, included about twenty-five fire personnel from North St. Paul and from other, uh, groups. Ultimately, um, there were no injuries reported, um, and the, uh, the damage was fairly minimal. In terms of the public works crews, uh, they spent a, quite a bit of time clearing debris from all the catch basins around town, um, in anticipation of the storm, so that there wouldn't be, uh, localized flooding. Uh, and they did, uh, have a lot of tree limbs, including one that, um, Councilmember Thorson sent me some pictures of them cleaning up. Uh, so they did a gr- a great job. They, um, spent some time pumping water off of the ball fields to make them playable for the, the games. And then finally, the electric utilities crew responded to a power outage, uh, due to the storms on, um, Wednesday night. The power outage affected about a hundred and thirty-five households, uh, and four linesmen were able to respond, troubleshoot the problem, uh, and even enduring heavy winds and heavy rain, they had the power restored in just over an hour. Uh, wanted to give you a brief, um, personnel update. Since March, four police officers have been hired. Um, one police officer is in the final process of being hired as well. With that, the police will be at their full complement. Uh, and then one finance clerk starts Monday. And we've talked about the, um, the benefits of that in terms of coverage, um, and overlap. And then the posting closed on our community development director on Friday. Uh, we had fifteen applicants. Um, there are, I, I feel pretty good about, um, a handful of them, and we'll move forward with interviews probably in about ten days, two weeks maybe. So that's my reports for the night.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, reports of council, commissions, committees, uh, Councilmember Cole?
With respect to time, I'll keep them very short. Uh, the Economic Development Authority met on five-ten. Uh, primary topic was the lot improvement at, uh, twenty-five-seventy-nine Seventh Street. The, um, EDA was very impressed with the way that it looks, but, uh, a little less robust as to the enthusiasm that they had with the price tag that came in on it. Uh, so the EDA asked that, um, the space be taken a look at and see if they can come up with a better space cost balance initiative to, to, to move forward with developing that land. Uh, next EDA meeting will be June fourteenth at three o'clock here in City Hall. Uh, following that, there was an EDA Planning Commission meeting that was, that took place at five o'clock. Um, three primary topics, um, sign ordinance, as we talked to earlier tonight, uh, basically to simplify and streamline the ordinance, uh, a little conversation around the Lilly Building, and again, the conversation around twenty-five-seventy-nine Seventh Street. And again, the primary reason for the EDA and Planning Commission isn't, is, is more of a, the ability to keep both commission, the commission and the authority, um, apprised as to what's going on and, and not having, um, a lot of overlay here, or, in, in keeping conversation topics alive. Um, and I, we were all in attendance, so I'm sure you'll each have your own piece to take away from that. Next meeting, July twenty-first. And lastly, the park and rec meeting, uh, this month scheduled the twenty-fifth at six-thirty here at City Hall. And after that, we're moving outside.
Perfect. And it's been beautiful out. Uh, Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, um, so the Planning Commission had just met, um, as you've seen the sign ordinance, so I won't, um, repeat that again, but, um, a lot of hard work did go into that, so I do want to thank our city planner and, um, Lisa Ritchie and, uh, the Planning Commission for doing a lot of work and long nights to, to streamline that. Um, as for, um, the Planning Commission, we're fully sta- uh, fully commissioned now, so thank you for that approval. Um, I believe the redevelopment master plan will be going to the Planning Commission here soon for review. Um, as for the Arts and Culture Commission, we did have a resignation due to personal matters and family matters, but, um, we were able to fill both spots, actually. Um, we had a lot of great candidates and, um, thank you for approving those commissioners as well. Um, in terms of projects, we have the downtown banner draft that's been, um, proposed, um, as well as, um, to Councilmember Thorson's, um, concern regarding logos, we're in compliance or within the guidelines of that. Um, and then, let's see, our next meeting is, uh, the first of, first Wednesday and first Thursday, first Thursday for planning and first Wednesday for the Arts and Culture Commission. And we had some special guests in our last meeting too, um, from the Rotary Club, and, um, they had discussed a potential Rotary Clock as a potential project in the future. All right, that's it, thanks.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, um, last week at the Business Association luncheon, we had Roger Fink. He's, um, the owner of Anchor U Apartments, and he was very complimentary of our city and our staff, how it works very seamlessly. What, because he's developed Polteridge, so he's familiar with North St. Paul. So that was good to hear. And the Nineteenth Avenue student-built house is really coming together again. The siding is, uh, almost on, the roof, uh, shingles are on, inside the cabinets and countertops are being installed, and it's really shaping up. I took a little tour of it, so it's pretty impressive. That's all I have.
Nice. Have they set a price yet?
No, but it looks like July it'll be ready.
Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing.
Uh, General Business, Councilmember Cole?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Wong?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I want to thank the high school for their day of service. I saw many students out there with trash bags, and they covered the whole city and kudos to them. So that helps our public works and they get something out of it. So thanks again for that. And the Mac Home here, the veterans' house, there's been a family in there since Christmas. So I called them up and I said, "What's up?" And they're, you know, they decide on so many families or whatever, so there'll be somebody in there, but I was kind of wondering, I thought, I haven't seen any action. And our church wanted to do something special during Christmas time, and I said, "There's nobody in there," so. I thought that was kind of odd.
There's someone in there now.
I don't know. Are, is it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe so.
I don't, I haven't seen any action, but, okay, that's good then.
You shouldn't be peeking in people's windows.
I don't do that. I, if I see lights on, I know.
Uh, 'cause I, I heard there was a code enforcement, somebody-
Oh, okay.
-from there was, uh, parking in front of one of the residents.
Okay.
It was from the house there.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, just very brief, since it was brought up landscaping downtown for the project, I mean, I, I don't even remember the part of that getting pulled, but, I mean, it, we gotta put something together and get something going. We can't wait to plant stuff until the end of the year. I mean, and, and I don't see that as something that's breaking the bank unless it's because we're trying to route irrigation or something. Again, and it's these costs that drive things up, that delay stuff, it just is becoming extremely frustrating for me and others, 'cause I know I get asked about that all the time, about what's going on in downtown with the landscaping. So that would be nice to move that up the list and, and get something going. Uh, I don't think it needs to take council action unless it's over a dollar amount, but I don't know. So maybe we can move that up on the priority list. And then, you know, as, you know, we're getting overwhelmed here with numbers tonight and, uh, good presentations, but as we were, you know, giving, hearing from Baker Tilly and in particular ways to increase our bond rating, I couldn't help but think there's a quick and easy solution to that to improve our city finances, and that would be to sell the community center. I don't, I don't care who we sell it to, but if we were to sell our, that, that would improve our finances without a doubt, and we could use that money to help finance things like landscaping for downtown or put it towards a road project that's twenty percent over, or, you know, all sorts of different things. So I hope that we can have continued discussion, uh, on that idea, um, or at least continue discussion on the plan for that facility, because, you know, we had a workshop on that a month ago, and, uh, we need to keep going with that. So that's all I have.
And I got, uh, uh, we had the, uh, Air Force ROTC the other day, uh, did the, uh, baton death march, uh, did a, uh, just, uh, in memorial of all the people that, that did that, uh, or went through that. Uh, but there's about thirty kids that actually did it. They walked fourteen miles and, uh, we had a, a good turnout there of, of people to, to cheer them on, so it was, it was real nice of them to do that. And I hear the program is kind of, uh, in jeopardy because they only have so many people, so many kids in the program. So it's nice to be able to support them and, and try to promote that, uh, that program over there, 'cause I think it's very important for, for the school to have that, uh, program over there. Other than that, I think that's it, and, uh, if there's anything else?
So a reminder that after the city council meeting, we have a HRE meeting.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure.
Uh, so, motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and now we'll go into, unless you want to take a two-minute break, we can go into our HRE meeting.